I'm going to call the Select Board meeting back to order. We were in executive session earlier this evening and we took no action on item A. As required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the Chair prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment? Anyone? Well, I guess I'll go ahead and let you announce, Joe, item number, I mean, A, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. Yes, as I announced last week, we are actually, I'm gonna do math, excuse me, 14 days away, so two weeks from tonight will be the Community Engagement Forum for the Planning of Phase 3A Wastewater, which is the project proposed in and around Great Sand Lakes. This Community Engagement Forum will be held on Tuesday, October 29th, 2024, at 6:30 PM at the Community Center, which is at 100 Oak Street. And as we did for Phase 3, we'll be in the multipurpose room. And again, this is a Community Engagement Forum but slightly different than the last one. We're asking the Board to be present because you're gonna hear a presentation from GHD and this will impact on decisions for next steps. So again, the Phase 3A Wastewater Community Engagement, two weeks from tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And item B, Jeff?
Let Emily go. Emily's gotten up and down twice now.
Oh, sorry, Emily, go ahead. I didn't see that.
I'm gonna go to my calendar quickly so Emily can jump in.
You're very kind. I don't mind getting up and sitting down. Emily Mitchell, Town Clerk. Just wanted to give folks a few brief reminders about the upcoming presidential election. So first and foremost, Election Day itself is Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, exactly three weeks from today. Voters do have the option to vote either by mail, in person during early voting hours, or in person on Election Day. The vote-by-mail process is actively underway, so we have already mailed out about 4,000 ballots to voters. We have mailed the ballots for everyone who has requested one so far. So if you have an application on file with our office, we have mailed you a ballot. Folks have up until Tuesday, October 29th, at 5:00 PM to apply for a mailed ballot. So if you're still interested in voting by mail, there is still time. If you know that's the voting method you're interested in, we encourage folks to submit those applications sooner than later, just knowing they have to go out in the mail and then come back to us. Folks can return mailed ballots in person either to the Town Clerk's office during business hours or to the secure blue drop box that is located in the Town Hall parking lot, and that is available to voters 24/7. Folks returning ballots that way must do so by the close of polls on Election Day, so by 8:00 PM on November 5th. If they're putting those ballots actually into the mail system, it's postmarked by Election Day and received within three days, so by November 8th. If folks are interested in voting in person during the early voting period, that begins this Saturday, October 19th, and will run through Friday, November 1st. The full hours and details are on our website, and if folks have questions, they're welcome to call us. We have them posted on the wall on the bulletin board as well, but it is that two-week period. And then, of course, on Election Day itself, November 5th, polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Voter registration deadline is Saturday, October 26th. So I know that's a ton of dates. We have this handy graphic, again, available in hard copy and at the top of our Town Clerk Department page that goes over all those voting methods and dates and response methods, so quick guide that anyone can refer to. And again, if folks have questions, we encourage them to reach out to us at any time.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Emily, I missed that. Could you just repeat that? No, I'm kidding. Thank you very much. I have two public comments, Madam Chair. The first is, like I say, I never want to miss an opportunity to give credit where credit's due. Our library hosted tips, techniques, and technologies. It's a program for people who are blind or have low vision. The topic was fire prevention and first aid. Our two guest speakers were Susan Jessel, the Harwich Town Nurse, and Captain Leanne Smith from the Harwich Fire Department. The email we received today essentially gave accolades to those two town employees, stating, "We are fortunate to have two such intelligent and dedicated town employees who are willing to share their time and talent." So I think this Board is saying thank you to those two employees for their incredible work. And then lastly, I will be holding office hours, potentially with Select Board Member McCaskill, tomorrow night, October 16th, at the Community Center, from 5:15 to 7:00 PM. All are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else for public comment announcement?
Good evening, everybody. Patrick Otten, East Harwich. Town meeting, when was it last May, six or seven months ago? The issue of clickers came up by the moderator, and the Board was going to follow up and do an evaluation and have recommendation for our next town meeting, so I'm looking for an update, please.
We will follow up. I believe the moderator was going to speak directly with the Town Clerk, Emily.
Do you need any additional information? I have reports from all surrounding towns.
That's okay. Well, I will make sure that we follow up with the moderator and our Town Clerk, and we'll give an update.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment announcement? Hearing nobody, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, actually, prior, any members, excuse me, any members have an issue with either A or B? Madam Chair, I move to approve the Select Board meeting minutes from September 30, 2024, and item B, approve the appointment of Austin K. Buttrick as a special police officer as recommended by Police Chief, effective October 16, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Michael?
Assuming a positive vote, I'd just like to welcome Austin Buttrick and thank him for coming, and maybe the Chief would have a few comments.
Members of the Board, Mr. Powers, good evening. Kevin Consonine, Police Chief, it's my pleasure tonight to introduce Austin Buttrick. Austin grew up in town here. He was a high school intern with us through the Montemoy District, so that clearly worked. Austin, the Harwich Police, actually, when Austin was going to the Police Academy, we sponsored him as a self-sponsor for the Police Academy. So we're very proud to help Austin do that, to get through the Police Academy. Austin spent six years in the United States Marine Corps and then went to Yarmouth PD for four years. He is slated to go to the next State Police Academy in April, but in the meantime, as I say in my memo, with issues with filling details and some retirements in the special officer ranks, I think this is a natural fit for Austin to help us out until that academy date comes up, and I just appreciate your support and welcome Austin to our Police Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Austin, welcome to you and thanks for your service in the Marines.
You might have to vote on it first.
I was gonna do all that after we took the vote, but Michael interrupted me, so. All in favor? No kidding. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, aye.
Chief, you have about five months to convince them otherwise.
Okay, new business? Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just give me a quick moment, if you don't mind. So what you should have in your packet is information regarding the two current license agreements that the Select Board, as the town have, at two wonderful locations, of course Cranberry Valley and Sacquetucket Harbor. As you know, when we did the RFP three years ago, the town typically inserts language that allows the town to extend option years. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter 30B, we can extend up to two years, and the preferred practice is one year each, so that's how we notified it. So I am recommending that the Board contemplate extending each of the two separation, separate agreements as outlined in my memorandum. Again, under Mass General Laws, Chapter 30B, the terms and the rates that you see there are the same for the third year. That's how the options have to go under the Mass General Laws. So it would be to extend the current agreements, carry it over for an additional year. It's my general understanding, can we get those doors, please? It's my general understanding that I know the respective department heads support this, and we're hopeful that the establishments are willing to come onboard for another year.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions from Board members? Jeff?
I just have a quick question, Joe. Out of curiosity, the dockside restaurant at the bottom of their agreement is a certification as to payment of state taxes, but that is not present in the Cranberry Valley one. Is there a reason for that?
So, I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Yeah, absolutely. So at the bottom of the dockside agreement, there is a certificate, certification as to payment of state taxes, actually, there's Form D.
Yep.
And Form, yeah, Form D and certification as to payment of state taxes. But that is not in the Cranberry Valley.
So I think that the documents that we have, we have it, it was required for the RFPs. Everybody's required to do that. So I know that we have it.
Okay.
For Cranberry Valley, and we can make sure that the correct packet is together. Again, the matter tonight is relative to the, to the year and to the dollar amounts, but yes, it's our standard requirement.
Understood. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other comments? Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The agreement relatively Cranberry Valley, I just want to make sure because I brought it up last year, did we ever get through a conversation with the vendor about what happened with the equipment that was there? Because we maintain in these leases that, you know, we've got a restaurant that's got equipment and that they're gonna operate it, and there's even some clauses in here about what would happen if they wanted to replace equipment, but it didn't presuppose that they were gonna have to bring equipment in. I was just curious whether, has that been all resolved?
So generally speaking, the town is responsible for equipment at both establishments. They work through the department heads for each location if there's a need for equipment to be replaced. I believe the thing you may be referring to is the current vendor purchased equipment from the prior vendor that is still in question. We're working on an agreement between the parties that's still in negotiations and discussions. That's an agreement that would come before the Board.
Can we have that on the agenda in the future? I want to see this resolved. That was a year ago.
It's in negotiation.
Right, so it can't come?
It's still a year ago, and we presume that we're providing equipment according to the agreement, so I'm not sure. I get that you're negotiating it, but there, I mean, as far as the conclusion of this, we're renewing an agreement that still had loose ends from the prior agreement. So I'd really like to be kept apprised of this in the future about the status of it.
So they're current, right.
Once we have something to bring to the Board.
Exactly.
It'll be brought to the Board.
Madam Chair, not to expand on that, if I may?
Go ahead.
Is there a timeline from the town administrator? Because I know the Select Board Member Howell did ask for this not once but twice now over, over a pretty extended period of time. Do you have any idea?
I don't recall that, but...
Well, I'm glad that I did. Any idea, timeframe, or is this just something else that's gonna wait?
No, I think it's a matter of weeks. My understanding is staff was able to connect with council and advise council of the town's position and understanding. Council then was preparing a document, I believe, last month. So my understanding, when I reached out to staff, is that should certainly be closed out before the end of the calendar year.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just real quickly, I don't think I started in here and it's not gonna hold up my vote, but could we, could we get a copy of the escalation agreement for the net annual sales for Cranberry Valley? I didn't see that in here. It sounds like it was a separate document.
Yes, what we have is in the bid documents, so I can share that. It went 1, 2, 3, plus the dollar amounts, but we can add that as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item?
I didn't hear who made the motion in the second. Pete made the motion, I made the second.
So moved.
Five zero.
Thank you. Sounded like it could've happened that way.
Works for me.
So the next item, item B, the Traffic Safety Committee request for the four-way stop that we had received through, obviously, Traffic Safety. Do any Board members have any comments?
I can start.
Madam Chair, there, as the Traffic Safety Liaison, there's been a number of correspondences from the, from the residents that live about and around. As you can see in the packet, many names, many signatures, many names from many residents around the area. I believe Traffic Safety had a meeting. Aaron, would you, if you don't mind? Because clearly I'm stumbling here. But I believe Traffic, Traffic Safety held a meeting, I believe you were there.
Yep, Aaron Garcia, Police Department, September 24th.
Twenty-fourth, yep.
We met, I think we had 30 signatures, 20, 30 signatures. A number of those folks showed up at the meeting, some are here tonight, expressing their concerns for the traffic on Pleasant Street. In particular, the intersection with Cross and Pleasant kinda came into play, and as a committee, we listened to what they had to say, and we thought maybe a four-way stop would help sort of calm and slow down traffic going through that area. It is not a normally-used tool, I guess if you will. It's not, it's not, doesn't fly in the face of any state laws, but we don't always do with the, it's a Cape Cod Commission thing. They don't like stop signs as traffic calming, but it doesn't say you can't do it, and I don't think we go along with the Commission on everything they say. So due to the number of people, it's also not such a high-traveled area where we're gonna have backups and that sort of thing. So we just thought it was a practical application, and it would help kind of calm some of the concerns that we heard from the residents.
Great.
And you're in support of this, Arum, if I?
Yes, we are. I think we voted...
Traffic Safety, and, and, yes?
Yeah, we voted to move it forward to you all.
Perfect. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we vote positively for the request for a four-way stop at the intersection of Pleasant Street and Cross Street. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Michael?
Is there a town, I guess through you and the town administrator, is there a town policy? I know we have a committee on this, but is there a town policy on this?
I'm not aware. I was not part of this process, so I'd have to defer to either the Chief or the members of the committee.
So I, and I further my question by asking, is there a Police Department support or policy on this? Several things that we do, liquor licenses, entertainment licenses, we get a memo in the packet that says Police Department's in full support of this, and we found nothing. So I guess I'm asking, and we dealt with this years ago in the campgrounds, and there was a lot of speeding through the campgrounds, and I know the Board met four or five times, Traffic Safety weighed in, and it still came back to DPW and the residents of that neighborhood purchasing speed humps to put them in as traffic calming, and then they have to remove them at the end of the year. Stop signs is a lot easier than speed humps, although I think people really do slow down for the bumps. But is there any policy that we're leaning towards, or are we, and I'm not against this, opening ourselves up for every neighborhood that cars speed through putting stop signs up?
Kevin Consonine, Police Chief, there is no policy at the Police Department for stop signs. It is, it is a traffic measure by the Select Board, so there's something officially on paper for enforcement issues that come up. We, I've never seen a policy. I have a book from going back to Chief Ranio from the 70s of where many of these policies, stop signs, were in no parking zones, were put in place by the Police Department at the time, and I'm assuming because of a lack of a Traffic Safety Committee. But I've never seen a policy. We do support this, however, I've never seen a policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is, on the other hand, the inverse of that, that signs that are placed by the Police Department and/or any other entity that don't have the Executive's approval are actually void when you go to court for the purposes of enforcing them. So we do have to vote on them if we're gonna place them.
Just, I'm just gonna add that it, it did go through, in my opinion, what the process should be, which is public, Select Board, Traffic Safety, Traffic Safety Officer, back to the Select Board for a vote. So I believe this went through exactly how it, how it should've gone and been vetted.
Thank you, Jeff.
Of course.
Do you have anything?
I'll just add, I'm not convinced it's gonna solve the issue, but I hope that it, it helps with the issue that's ongoing. But, but Arum got my support as soon as he said the Commission doesn't approve of these things.
Okay. All in favor? Five zero.
That was the best one this year, right there, Pete.
Factual, by the way.
Yeah, well, that's why it works.
Item C?
Madam Chair, item C, approve a Hockers and Pedalo's license for Pilgrim Lodge AF and AM, 76 Main Street, sell Christmas trees at 9 Sisson Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And discussion on the draft Select Board policy on public comment, which Danielle had to resend. I did not have that put in the packet this week because it is a draft that we just received. So then we will get feedback from Board members, and then whatever final version, we will actually vote. So we don't have to vote that tonight, but if you, if you're content with it, we could also vote it. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think I'm the only one who has this question. Did we pay to get this draft?
To pay to get the draft?
Billable hours? KP Law?
I can ask. We haven't received a bill that would relate to this.
One reason is that I'm somewhat stunned. I don't recall us saying that we actually wanted to do this particularly, but I, for one, am not gonna vote in favor of this, even if it does come back, because we're trying to fix a problem that can't be articulated. I mean, when's the last time we actually had to have somebody escorted out of the room here? And when they, I said it when John Georgia was here, and he was on billable hours then, frankly, I think we're using lawyers too much myself, but I don't see that we need a policy. There's so many other things that are going wrong right now, just to waste time on a policy where arguably there's another side for free speech. One person's anger speech is another person's free speech. I'm not sure who would be the arbiter of that. And there are laws that when somebody crosses the line into making something that would be considered to be a physical threat, you can be arrested for that. If they're in proximity and you feel an imminent danger. So I don't know why we need a policy to codify a law.
So it was council's suggestion that we do adopt a policy, and we did have a conversation, and we did say that we were going to move forward with John providing a draft policy for public comment. That's how this came to be.
I wouldn't support paying anything more.
You don't have to support it. If you don't want to vote for it, that's fine, but I'm just saying that's why it ended up on our agenda, that's why John worked on it. He also mentioned Dennis was drafting a policy, and I had asked if we could also have that, and they have not finalized a policy yet.
He's their lawyer, too.
I understand, Don. I'm, I'm just letting you know that I asked for a comparable document, and it's not finalized. So this is the one that we've received for Harwich. Any other comments from Board members?
Madam Chair.
Michael?
The only comments I had were related to the overall, really for Board discussion, the overall timeframe for public comment announcement. You know, is 30 minutes too much? Is 30 minutes enough? And I thought that that, I think the three minutes is fair. I do recall the attorney saying that this is a good policy to have for consistency purposes, to try and make sure that we're not being inconsistent with one person or one group than the others. So I don't share Don's opinion on that. The last piece of this, though, the very last paragraph, enforcement, I guess I'd just like to understand, I'd like to see the code of conduct, and then I'd like to understand how other towns do this with the town administrator. We'll discuss with the Chair and take appropriate action. I'd like to know a little bit more about that bottom paragraph and what that actually means.
So what I would ask is that all Board members, if you want, you know, because everybody should take a look at it and the comments you just made, if you just, you know, send me those in an email, so I can then gather all that info, go back to John or staff with the draft, and we can bring another draft back, which is exactly why I didn't want to put it in the packet, so.
Send me mine tomorrow.
Yep. Thank you. You don't have to send me them.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not talking about that. It's, but it's a chicken or the egg argument. Personally, we're talking about a sentence towards the end of something that we received at 10:30 this morning and that the public has never seen, and at some point or another, I really feel like as an open body, it shouldn't be coming through emails, it should be going into the packets as a draft, which is what it's intended to be, but so that everybody can understand what we're saying. Anybody who's trying to follow this would have a tough time because we didn't even get it until this morning.
So the original was sent, I believe Danielle sent it on Friday, and then John recognized that a portion did not come through, which is why he resented. So that's exactly why I'm saying this needs to come back, and it will be in the packet. But I'm looking to get anybody's comments so we can have a draft that we can put in the packet and have a conversation about, and then possibly vote it.
Madam Chair, I think this is a good opportunity to move forward to the next agenda item, and then the Board members can send their, their ideas or their feelings about it to you, and then we can move forward with this down the road.
Perfect.
If, if that's the flavor of the Board.
Feel free to send any comments so that I can then forward them on for a revised draft. Old Business, discussion and vote on the general policy statement for the development of the fiscal year 2026 budget. So overall, Joe presented us with his draft memo last week. We talked about it, said we would bring it back. The only other comment I would have is, is the Board looking for, the Board to have a written document to reinforce the idea of a level service maintenance budget? Or are we looking to hold off on any formal vote till we get finalized numbers in the beginning of November? That's where I'll leave it. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, the policy statement that's articulated in the charter is for us to give instructions to the town administrator, who then disseminates them to people in order to put their numbers together, so...
Understood, but I'm asking, do you want something in writing to officially vote on, or are you comfortable with saying? Because we have talked about a maintenance-style budget, level ser, level service, not level funded, and overall, we've talked about not adding more projects to our already lengthy list until we completed those projects, and also the fact that we've got a massive sewer project and that we were able to add an HR position last year at town meeting, and previously we added the other one that we had, which was the housing coordinator.
I get that, but it's always been in writing, and it's always come as an instruction from the Board to the town administrator, and yes, we should have it in writing.
So we'll, we'll have a written document to vote on Monday night.
Terrific.
I would agree. Excuse me, having it in writing is probably to our benefit. The other thing, and I've been given a thought over the course of the week, is I think that the statement's probably a little light, and we may want to consider some language, and I understand that it's a policy, a general policy statement, but at the same time, I think we may want to include some, some terminology, you know, that relates to the capital plan of debt obligations as well, not just the operating budget.
And actually, if you want to send me any, any thoughts, and I'll incorporate them in the written statement. Anybody else feel free to do that as well? C, I mean, sorry, Contract, item A?
You want to take it, Joe? You want me to take it?
So I don't have the full packet in my material, so I'm not sure. I apologize, that's the wrong packet. Thank you. As you can see in the first item, as the Assistant Town Administrator has indicated, so the town is part of the Barnstable County Procurement Consortium for the salt contract. So our DPW Director is the one that was working on this for road salt for treatment during the winter. It's pretty straightforward as far as the process goes. Again, being part of the consortium, I think we have a better opportunity to get better pricing, and I would recommend approval based on staff's input.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joe. So you want us to hold and then move on to...
No, I'm sorry, the staff is recommending. I agree with staff.
I thought you were saying you wanted to follow up.
No, I recommend adoption.
Okay, great. Thank you. So can, can I get a motion?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
An amount not to exceed 126.
Aye.
Aye.
As written.
Yada, yada, yada.
Yada, yada.
Five zero. B.
Moved that we approve a contract with GHD Inc. for a post-restoration monitoring of Coldbrook in the amount of $178,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Town Administrator's report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you give me a moment to catch up, you are far too expeditious for me, so we have the two contracts coming around that you just approved. First item for my report is my, our Health Director, excuse me, Carrie Shoner, indicated that the town has received an update on our opioid settlement funding, and as you know, we have the working group that was reviewing this in the years past. The group resumed under Carrie's direction, and so what they're looking to do is to continue to partner with Gosnold and also work with a program known as the Expressive Digital Imagery, or EDI Program. This is a pilot program, school-based prevention for group curricula, and it's a partnership with the Montmorel School District. This is something that was first done by Barnstable, other Barnstable County schools, and we think it's going to work well. So the request for funding was for $10,428, $5,000 of which was awarded through the FY23 article. The additional $5,424 the group has agreed to award was also available. So total expenditure of $10,428 for the Expressive Digital Imagery Program in the schools, it's a program for students, caregivers, and teachers, and I think it's a worthy endeavor, and that's why I agreed with staff's recommendations and executed that contract.
That it?
That's all I have for this evening, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Pete?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things, and again, I don't want to believe in the points, but I'm wondering if we, if we, do we have a timeframe on when we're going to discuss the search firm for the Finance Director?
Yeah, actually, I had followed up on that last week, and Joe, I thought you said you were going to have information to share. Was it next week or the following?
Next week.
But that, just to be, just for clarification, too, I went back and watched that meeting. We did not vote, we, we vote you guys, because I wasn't at that meeting. You talked about having prices, ideas for what the contracts, what those services would cost, and I think it was three or four different, different vendors, one of whom, I recall you, Joe, said had an issue with giving us the cost in the past.
Right, one of the firms had expressed before that they insist that rather than give quotes to give us a sense of the marketplace, they would rather respond to a formal RFP.
Correct.
As you know, not the actual corporate title, but Kinsheriff Associates, as part of their contract, they have agreed, they have been searching, they've been seeking applications. We actually do have one that I've asked the Finance Director to talk to the chair about. It may be a viable option. They also, in addition to the town putting it on MMA, they're working through the Finance Director's group, known as the Government Finance Officers Association, GFPA, so they already have their subscription, so they're doing that. So if we want to do beyond that, we certainly can. Right now, we're getting searched through our firm at a cost that was already approved.
And I, I do recall that we had that conversation, and this is no disrespect to Eric and his team, but again, I think when we talked as a collective group that evening, the importance of this position is, is, well, I guess the only way to put it is it's extremely important to this board. It's one of our four direct reports, and again, we decided, I think you're, you're correct, Madam Chair, is that we didn't, we didn't approve on a particular group. What we wanted was to hear from these groups.
Right.
So that we can make an educated decision to move forward. I love the fact that there may be a potential candidate, and, and perhaps, you know, things can move forward there. However, that's one candidate. This has been several months. So the whole point of, you know, trying to bring on a search firm is to get multiple candidates, to get the best candidate for the town of Harwich. So again, if we could have an update next week, that would be great. Additionally, on the same type of conversation, are we going to agenda the wastewater project manager discussion for next week as well? The project manager.
Oh, you're talking about that. Sorry, when you said the wastewater, never mind. I thought the discussion, we can bring it back, because we talked about whether or not we were going to move forward after we had the information from Jeff. So happy to put it back on. So I'm just a little confused by that, because the last time we talked about that, when he was here...
Sorry, you said Jeff?
Oh, did I?
Mark Tringville?
Mark, sorry, excuse me, Mark. When Mark was here, we talked about what they were currently doing under their contract. So then I thought that we did not move forward with wanting to go back to say that we were going to go for one of those three positions. Maybe my recollection is incorrect.
I, I read the room differently that evening. I thought it was a conversation about, we were debating between a coordinator and a manager. So...
I'll, I'll put it back on.
Yeah, so I thought I'd be a vote for this board to, to make it final. You know, and again, in the end, we may vote neither, but...
Right.
I don't think we've taken a vote on that.
And that's why, so we, we left with different, so I'll put it back on. I left thinking that we weren't looking for...
Could I jump? There's no need to bring Mark back for this.
No.
Okay.
No, because he...
Just making sure.
He described what they were doing.
Yeah, I agree.
If I could...
But, but a matter of, for the packet, just to be clear, the, the same three descriptions will be put back in.
Also wondering, do we have a, a status on the customary town meeting articles that we had talked about trying to push, push through early?
No, I was actually asking about that. Was it last, I think it was last week, I was asking where we were with the ones that we thought that we could get drafts from council, so that we could at least vote them to be somewhat ahead. But you gave an update on that, where I don't think John Giorgio had anything to pass along yet, or was it...
No, but if it's customary articles, I already have them written.
That's what I imagine, they're just printed.
We had the customary, but then we had, we had the couple of additionals. For instance, the one that we were talking about doing at special time meeting that we're not going to do now, which was Richard Wasteex.
Right, the assessors accept statute.
And, and we had that one. There was a secondary one, which is escaping me right now, but there was a second one.
Well, and I'm happy to have those as well, but the customary, again, as you said, they, they didn't change them last year.
Right.
So to me, yeah, let's try to push them forward and, and move on. I've got three other items, but, you know, I brought them up last time. I'll hold off on them for now. I'll defer to the rest of the board.
Madam Chair, if I could, so based on that, and as you're building agenda material, I will say that you'll be getting the draft project eligibility letter next week. Then that's just to put the draft out there, certainly not for you to sort of digest it all that night, but we are still targeting the October 28th date, if the board still wants to do that. So that material will also be present next week for you to discuss if you'd like. So it's our draft response. Still waiting to hear if there's going to be a site visit. Not holding our breath on that one.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two things. I'm, I'm going to keep asking this each week, what the status is on the temporary occupancy permit for Brooks Academy on the first floor. Wouldn't, we might expect to actually see that.
Soon as the Facilities Maintenance Manager returns, we're going to pick that item up. I believe we have significant progress on the occupancy document.
Okay.
I believe he's scheduled to return next week.
And on a lighter side, a, a number of us from the board participated in a wellness visit with Albert Ranio yesterday, and his wife, Josephine, and his extended family. Cindy Williams organized it. Dick and Shirley Gomes were there, and greater import for Albert's purposes, the, the mayor slash governor of Brava, Francisco Taveras was there. He was thrilled for the personal visit, and I think he was really touched that the board showed up, too. It was just a wonderful time.
It was. It was wonderful. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Joe, should, regarding this truing up of the CPC numbers, should I be reaching out to Eric Kinsheriff as, as the Finance Director being our direct report, or do you have information about where that sits?
No, I think you should. He is your direct. I haven't heard an update other than, I believe Markham is working on it, but Eric would be the one to give you that update.
Fantastic. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Jeff. Michael?
In the last wastewater information forum, Jeff from GHD mentioned, and I only read this in the paper, that there were tax credits available for sewer-ing and people that hooked up. I read it in the Chronicle today. Can we see if we can get that information on what tax credits he's talking about?
Absolutely. I believe his reference was to programs that are either through the state or the county, but we'll make sure that's available.
I got calls today from Phase Two people seeking tax credits if they're available.
Yep. I have a standing meeting with them tomorrow, so I'll bring that up, and I'll share it with the board as soon as we get it. And if I may, you said that was part of the Phase Three...
Last, yes, last meeting.
Thank you.
Anything else? No? Joe, when did you say that we were going to get the traffic info from VHB?
So VHB is working concurrently on North Harwich and Harwichport. I believe early December for North Harwich and then middle of December for Harwichport. I did have a conversation today with Christie, Senator, of the Cape Cod Commission. We know that one of the residents had received information from the county. I'm not sure how in-depth that was, so I've asked the county to make sure that we have the most up-to-date information, because they were doing that anyway. VHB has worked with the Commission, so we should have the most up-to-date information from both the county and our, our own studies. So again, early December and mid-December.
Thank you. I don't have anything else. Can I get a moment?
Motion, Chair.
Second.
All in favor?